He knows enough to. So he's worked one of these ways. He has like a lot of craft. So it's not. He gets like, we're the world. Pretty well, you know, like he understands. So, and he's so.
Seven minutes. He's a nice person, so.
Yeah, awesome. Great target.
All the meaning to order slowly. Um, sorry.
Keep it going.
Broke up. Jessica.
Here.
Leah.
Here.
Jim.
Here.
Ethan.
Here.
Adam.
Here.
I'm also here, um, being as my current members. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Want to volunteer to read the mission statement?
I will. Go ahead, Jessica.
The Mount Harp Area School District in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing, empowering them to be productive, successful, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Thank you, Erica. Moving on to two, two A is approval of each other.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, seconded by Jim. Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to two B, approval of the November 21st, 2022 Board Meeting Regular Meeting Minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, seconded or not, further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to three, three A is our student spotlight, Dr. Slerno.
Our high school gets to recommend a student for the spotlight this month, and boy did they pick a great one. I'm going to invite our high school administration to come to the table and tell us about Garrett.
Oh, he has it all lined up.
I know.
And you're one of your.
So I did write a little bit because I would forget because there's just so much to say about Garrett. So come on down, Garrett. Get my little essay ready here, okay? So I've known Garrett for a long time and just, you know, this fall, I see Garrett a lot in the halls and so he's just somebody that kind of popped out at me like, I like that kid a lot and he's got something going. And so we asked some of the teachers to share some of their ideas with us and so here are a few of the things. Garrett is a shining example of a youth apprenticeship student. He works hard for Dave Jones as a youth apprentice, apprentice electrician. He has been working at Dave Jones for almost two years and he has not wasted any time. Getting up way before dawn and arriving on the job site ready to work is just part of his everyday life. When speaking with him on the job site, he is confident in his work, ethic, and abilities. He is a great mentor to other young employees and treats his fellow workers with extreme respect while also portraying a sense of humor. Garrett is a cross between Rip on Yellowstone and Andy Griffin. He is loyal, trustworthy, truly kind, and extremely respectful. In addition to being very busy in the morning, Garrett is also a football player in the fall, a wrestler, had a great weekend on Saturday, and plays with the club lacrosse team in Verona. He is a proud member of FFA and he was our FFA king this fall for the homecoming season. He is serving as Mount Harp FFA Student Advisor this year. His primary duties include involving members in career and leadership development events. He also helps administer our program of activities by helping plan fundraising, FFA trips, the FFA banquet, and other local activities. He was selected by the Mount Harp FFA alumni along with Griffin Helgeson to attend the National FFA Washington Leadership Conference in DC. Garrett sharpened his leadership skills last July when he joined FFA members from across the nation in the week-long conference. Garrett is known throughout the community as a student leader and a role model for younger FFA members. When we asked other staff for comments about Garrett, we heard such things as a natural leader, considerate, a helper, always willing to clean or assist with something, and just a really great young person. And we couldn't agree more. We are going to be very sad to see him leave in, in June when he graduates and, and head off to Wyoming.
Tell us about.
Yeah, go ahead and tell everybody what you're telling Dr. Slerno.
Yeah, so in, as it, September of 2023 is my start date. I'll be in Gillette, Wyoming at the number one voted welding school in the world at Western Welding Academy. So I'll be getting my welding certifications there.
And who's, who's in the fan club here tonight?
So I got my mom, Dean, and then I got my dad, Phil, and then I got my grandma and my grandpa.
Have to be so proud of you, all of us collectively representing the very best of Mount Harp High School. Can we present you with a certificate and a little memento of our appreciation for your good work? We would like to maybe even take a picture with you tonight, a small token of our gratitude for all that you do to represent the very best of Mount Harp High School. Congratulations to Garrett. Think about the best place we could take a picture and I'd like to invite our high school liaison, this is Mr. Adam Mertz. Adam is going to join us for our picture. Grandma, grandpa, mom, dad, would you be willing to be a part of the picture too? That'd be great. And Sarah Straka, could I trouble you to take the picture?
I would, I would.
Please.
I'll go this way. Just along for the ride.
Hi, ice cream?
Weird ice cream. I heard ice cream.
Yeah, must be the first time, long time he hasn't had to scrap down. Give you the picture.
Yeah.
Well, Steve.
That's the name of his little first.
Right now, it's gonna be a camera.
Do you remember? It's right outside. It's like, we were wrapped, and we, I feel like.
But I think it was right in.
Yes. Yes. So we went into. Yeah. And then they were here for another. That's just like a chair. Yeah. Okay.
Everybody.
I'm driven through there. Wasn't, wasn't science what we kept?
Watch out for the cords, please follow that. Do you have? No, why you almost break it?
Did you almost break it?
Yeah.
Let's go this way then. It's operated in uniform, so.
Good pick, you guys.
All right. To, uh, pre-see school news.
Yeah. So for music department, we have our band holiday concert this week, December 8th at 7:30, and the next week on Monday is our choir holiday concert, December 12th at 7:30. Tuesday this week, we have a, at 6:00, it's a girls varsity gymnastics meet versus Sauk Prairie, and a girls varsity basketball game versus Mountain Grove. We have boys varsity wrestling match against Reedsburg on December 9th, and a boys varsity basketball game against Onalaska December 10th.
Thank you.
Busy times to be sure, and into the holiday season, a lot of great musical events. Two items for the edification of the entire community. First, we have a community-wide facility survey that is out to families. Families should be receiving an email if they haven't already done so, asking them to participate in that survey, and then we are sending hard copies to everybody within the community. That survey is requested back to us by December 21st. And then anyone interested in joining this high-functioning governing body, our Board of Education, we have this year in April, two seats that come up for election, and we're encouraging anyone and everybody who's interested in a service mind to consider applying. Applications can be provided through my office. Feel free to reach out to me at your various communities.
Thank you, board members. Any school news?
The PTO is doing a take-home craft for people who didn't get to come to craft night. It's $5 and there's a Google form out on our Facebook and you have to register by the 9th, and then they'll send them, pick them up, I'm not 100% sure, the week after.
What grades?
K-5, but anybody could do it. They'll just be, there, we have a lot of crafts left over, so we're, we're doing that. I think there's five or six crafts in the take-home bag.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Other school news, board members?
I'm just going to highlight the fact that we had our boys' first swim meet last week was the first Tuesday, and they did pretty well. That's really exciting. We have six boys that are swimming, so that's pretty good to see. Always looking for new swimmers for next year, so three seniors. All right, moving on to three C, citizens' comments.
I didn't see anything.
All right, moving on to four A, personal transactions.
Board members, there is an agenda this evening, let's see.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Rod. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to five, our consent agenda, is there anything anybody would like to pull out? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Jessica, seconded by Leah. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to six, our discussion items are, tonight we just have our committee reports, and we will start with buildings, grounds, and transportations. Adam.
Sounds good, take that one. Got a couple items that'll show up later in the agenda here is the budgeted purchase of lights for this softball field, and also purchase of student ridership and GPS technology, so save that for that discussion. Just a couple of things to call out. One, Transportation Department continues to do an awesome job just figuring out how to, how to make it all work with the number of drivers they have. Have consolidated routes. The decision that we made to offer the, or be to kind of change the way that we did parochial school service has paid off. It was a lot of flexibility at the time and that's been, that's been an advantage in terms of regenerating how responsibilities are shared. There was one comment about, you know, the challenges still at this point being that we've seen an increase in special education routes, and want to make sure that we're continuing to staff those, obviously as fully as, as we can all the time. And then also special events continue to be an issue, weekend driving, night driving, that type of thing, so always seeking new, new drivers. We did get, as I think many board members saw previously, some really good pub, Mark Schilling over at Channel 3 did an interview, he just started driving this year and did a first-person interview about what it's like to drive bus in our district, and painted a very favorable picture, so I was, I was glad with that, you know, with all the, kind of the questions about what goes into this job, he really, he really talked it up and did an accurate job of showing the, the upside of what, what that role can be. That was fantastic. The, one other update, just to bring to mind, that I brought up was that we have, we're due to update our unusually hazardous plan, which has to do with kids walking to school and the intersections that they need to cross. The last time that this was done was in 1995. Circumstances have changed in the village, and so we'll talk about how and where to go about doing that and make sure that we have safe routes for kids, and that, that does affect on who is able to, correct me if I'm wrong here, ride the bus without fee, correct? Okay, yep. And so that'll be, that'll be a good exercise to go through. Those were the highlights that hopped out to me that aren't on agenda items.
Actually, I have a question. Does it, does this plan that you're talking about only have to do with students who ride the bus, or does it also have to do with students who walk?
Walking as well.
Walking as well, so this might address like issues that have come up over the past few years about where there's crosswalks, where there's not crosswalks, where there's crossing guards, like we could, that committee could address some of those issues, or at least identify them and figure out how.
Wouldn't necessarily be allocations that we have the authority to.
Sure.
Permit, but we can surely share them with the village.
We can make recommendations based on that, okay.
Yeah, from what I understand, the village was, has been talking about the number of crosswalks anyway across Main Street, so it would be timely, and I, we were, that was one of the things we discussed here was that this information will be really useful, I'm sure, for village planning as well.
Totally, yeah.
Awareness on what, what's safe walking around here anymore.
Okay, awesome.
Thank you. Other questions for Adam? All right, move on to finance committee with Jim.
Yes, so we last met on November 14th, and during our meeting, we accepted a very generous donation of $4,350 to be used for holiday gifts and winter clothing. And at the same time, we looked at some networking, and we're going to hear more about that to bring to the board, computer networking. And then lastly, we just talked about updating some board policies regarding the student activities funds that Mr. DeYoung will present here on, will next meet on December 12th. And that's about it. We also, just real quick, just brought up that this time of year is tight with cash flow, which it is every year, and then before we receive this tax money going in, so around Thanksgiving and Memorial Day are the two time periods during the year where cash flow is a little bit tighter than normal.
Thanks, Jim. Questions for Jim? All right, moving on to safety and wellness, Jessica.
We met on November 21st. For our equity update, Brian talked about how our community forum is going to be on December 12th. Our high school students had, and high school and one middle school student participated in a similar discussion that day, the 21st. They had gotten some feedback from them, and I believe the activity is going to be very similar, that's going to happen with the community next month. He gave us a school safety update, that the chief of police, our SRO, and the admin team worked on some safety scenarios, and they're continuing to work on updating a few related documents. In terms of mental health updates, the district is supporting multiple families during the holidays, Toys for Tots, family meals, and overall supports. The Youth Frontiers is a program that has happened in the middle school. It didn't happen because of COVID, there had been hopes that it would happen this year, but it's not going to, that they, Youth Frontiers has canceled their workshops for the school year, so that's something they'll look at again in the future. He also shared that a group of staff were officially trained on SEBerts, which is small group, hold on, I got random cockpups, small group interventions focusing on code of conduct violations. So Brian was really happy that teachers had been able to, not teachers, excuse me, but some staff had been able to go through that training. He also gave us a COVID update, and interestingly, if you want to remember that time, and I don't know how it is right now, but that week before Thanksgiving, it was RSV and influenza, were far more, the numbers were far higher than COVID. I don't know if those numbers are still really high, but we had a lot of students out sick right before Thanksgiving. He also shared that the DPI gave the district a mental health grant of $19,000, and they're working to, you know, identify the specific uses of how that money will be spent. And then we worked on some student discipline policies that are on our agenda for later tonight, and our next meeting, what was actually tonight, was a joint meeting with the Education Committee, and then we will meet again on January 16th.
Thanks, Jessica. Questions for Jessica?
This was the start time on that discussion next Monday.
Well, that's a really good question, maybe you could ask Dr. Slerno.
6:00 PM in the high school cafeteria.
Good question. All right. Moving on to our action items. Seven A, consider additions to board policy 662.1, student activities funds management. This is referred by the finance committee. Come down and help us cheer this up.
Good evening, everyone.
As mentioned earlier, there were a few policies, once again, that the finance committee went through, so thank you, members of that committee, for allowing me to walk through the details. So many of you may know, especially if you have students in our buildings, that we ask what we call student activity funds. There are funds that allow us to have clubs be able to generate revenue on various activities such as fundraising. They're also allowed to use those funds to pay for different activities that they have during the year, including conferences and things, and sometimes as board members, you know that we have people come and present on things that they have going on in their clubs, so. We have a couple of policies that address activity funds. Some of the changes that we're recommending tonight are things that we're currently doing, so it's not a new practice, it's just updating the policy to reflect the things that we're currently doing. There are also a couple additions that we just recently changed, not in terms of practice, but in terms of how our auditors recognize activity funds, so it's more of a auditing and accounting thing than it is what we see in day-to-day practice in our buildings. So the first change that I would like to point out is in the second paragraph, and it basically just addresses that the Board of Education recognizes that we have expenditures and that those expenditures are considered at the board table when you approve vouchers each and every meeting. The second item has to do with the fact that all of the records for activity funds, so all of the expenditures we're making, all of the deposits that are recorded are tracked and, and taken care of in the business office. The reason why that's important is because when it comes time for our annual audit, we're able to generate all the reports and all of the deposits and all of the vouchers that the auditors are asking to review as part of our annual audit in the summer. So needless to say, it's important to have that recognized in the policy. The next item is the paragraph right by Steve's cursor called, the item is called GASB84. GASB outlines a lot of the accounting practices that we must follow with our auditors, and when GASB84 came out, it basically said that it was recognizing activity funds as non-trust, non-custodial funds. Essentially what that means is because the district has scrutiny over these funds, principals, for example, approve expenditures of these funds, when deposits are made for revenue that's coming in, we have guidelines and practices that we follow to make sure it's done correctly. Because we as a district scrutinize and have oversight on the use of these funds coming in and dollars going out, as a result of that, they're considered non-trust, non-custodial, so we have to report that appropriately in our audit reports each year. From a, from a day-to-day activity practice, we're not changing anything, but certainly in terms of how the funds are recognized in our audit report, our auditors especially have to make sure that they follow GASB84. The, two more items, the second to last paragraph addresses interest, and what that, where we're going there is that we have funds in our bank account, and as a result, we generate interest. And so it's been the district's practice, well before I came here, that the interest is recognized and then recorded, so how we record interest is each building has a series of activity funds, and it's, as students, as you can imagine, get older, we get more and more activity funds, so of course, when we think of the high school, there are many activity funds. And so each and every month, when those funds collect interest, we have one general billing fund in the activity accounts for, again, each building, and that's how we recognize our monthly interest earnings. And then billings are allowed to be able to use that billing fund for the general good of the student body for various activities that they may want to pursue. Funds that are not used carry over, so that's the other beauty of GASB84, and with using what we call our Fund 22 accounts is what you don't spend on June 30th carries forward to the fiscal year on July 1st, which is really nice. And then the last item, which is the last paragraph, has to do in particular with dealing with negative accounts. You can imagine at times if the cash flow coming in versus going out doesn't quite match up, maybe there's a fundraiser that a club is doing, but for whatever reason, they need to make a down payment on something, and that causes a negative balance. That's far and few between when it happens, but when it does, the important thing for us to recognize is when we get to the end of the fiscal year, we should not have a negative balance. If we do, if you can imagine, a negative balance means that somebody else is subsidizing that negative balance until they get a positive balance. So I thought it was important to have in our policy that, in fact, there would not be accounts that have a negative balance at the end of the school year. That's some, that's a practice we've been following for years anyway, but it was important to have it recognized there. And then last but not least, at the end of this policy, it talks about a graduating class, so each class, class of 23, 24, 25, has their own fund. We thought that it was appropriate to recognize that when funds are remaining after they graduate, that they would have five years approximately to be able to use those funds, so if they have a class reunion, something like that, I'm looking at Colleen and she's smiling because we've talked about this many times, that they have an opportunity to be able to access those funds. And so that's something that we'll work on together to talk more about what that means in terms of communication, so that folks are aware of that. I wanted to point out one last thing, even though we're at the end of the policy, and it's going back to that second to last paragraph on interest earnings, there, the policy that's up next on the agenda is a separate agenda item just for interest earnings, and not to jump the gun, but you'll see in the description that we're recommending that we eliminate that policy because interest is now being recognized in this policy instead. Any questions? Leah?
So does this cover also like student, specific students, like I think of like the music when they fundraise, does this cover their accounts as well? So do we need something in here, or does it exist already? Because I know there's rules around if I, let's say, fundraise for London, and then the London trip gets canceled, any money I put in, I can get back, but the fundraising money, we can't pay out?
So, great question. That is something very specific to the club and to the advisors that are overseeing that activity. We have, and I'm not going to look to Cody, I promise, I'm trying to think of how many activity funds we have just in the high school alone, and I would say it's around 100. If not, we're getting pretty darn close, so it would be really difficult to pick out very specific activities to account for in a policy.
Is that a specific rule for the music department? Because we were told it was because you can't pay it out because it's considered payment for work, and it was a school rule, that we could not pay it out. So if it's, I feel like we should do it the same for, like if it's not in here, then it's not a rule, so.
Well, good point. So we can always create an admin rig that can cover more of the day-to-day practices that you're referencing. And I would be obviously super open to looking at that, but it would definitely be a very specific item to that. There's nothing.
I just want to be sure, like it, it sounded very much like it was some sort of state law or regulation that it could not be paid out, so if that was the case, it should be in here, but if it's not the case, then it doesn't need to be here. I'll answer that question.
Yeah, I wonder if it's also in our fundraising policy. We'll go back and check, but.
I feel like we, we looked at it somewhere, but I scrolled through and nothing's jumped out.
It rings a bell, yeah. We'll check into it, and then if we need to oppose an admin rig.
Because if it is, then we could also just link it, like, it would be, to just link it.
Other good questions?
So do we want to wait for that, to pass this policy, or?
I don't think, I think we can just, you can just tell us if it's in the, like I had this vague memory that we, we broke it down somewhere, so we could just link it, and that's a non-subordinate change, so could just add it after the fact.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Jessica. Further discussion? Hearing none, this is a first reading, so we'll call out Jessica.
Yes.
for work, and it was a school rule, that we could not pay it out. So if it's, I feel like we should do it the same for, like, if it's not in here, then it's not a rule. So.
Well, good point. So we can always create an admin rig that can cover more of the day-to-day practices that you're referencing.
Okay.
And I would be obviously super open to looking at that, but it would definitely be a very specific item to that. There's nothing.
I just want to make sure, like, it sounded very much like it was some sort of state law or regulation that it could not be paid out, so if that was the case, it should be in here, but if it's not the case, then it doesn't need to be in here. I'll answer that question.
Yeah, I wonder if it's also in our fundraising policy. We'll go back and check.
I feel like we looked at it somewhere, but I scrolled through and nothing jumped out.
It rings a bell. Yeah, we'll check into it, and then if we need to oppose an admin rig.
Because if it is, then we could also just link it, like, it would be, to just link it.
Other good questions?
So do we want to wait for that to pass this policy, or?
I don't think, I think we can just, you can just tell us if it's in the, like, I had this vague memory that we wrote it down somewhere, so we could just link it, and that's a non-subordinate change, so we could just add it after the fact.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion by Leah, seconded by Jessica. Further discussion? Hearing none, this is a first reading, so we'll call off. Jessica?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Carly?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
And also, yes, policy passes.
Thank you.
And moving on to seven B, consider removal of six-six-two-point-one-one interest from the estimate of activity funds due to the consolidation of the policy that we just talked about. I don't know if you have anything else to add. You kind of covered it in the.
No.
Okay.
Stop talking.
Motion by Leah, seconded by.
Second, we do not second.
Oh, you want me to stop talking?
I second.
Who's happy to do that? I'm just going to ask you. Okay. Motion by Leah, seconded by Jim. Further discussion? Hearing none, we have to roll call.
Yes, please.
This will be another roll call, so we'll start with Adam.
Yes.
Carly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Brad?
Hi.
Jessica?
Yes.
And I also, yes, that passes as well. Moving on to seven C, consider the budgeted purchases of lights for the softball field. Mr. DeYoung, you're here for a little while, apparently, so.
I was trying to recognize the looks that you were giving each other when people should stop talking, so I know that cue. And now I'll stop talking. I missed that, I missed that. Dave, you're welcome to come down and join me.
Oh, I recognize that. I will use two.
As he's making his entrance.
Yes, master.
One of the things you may recall is that, as a result of accessing Esser funds, that allowed us to have money available to pursue installing softball lights. And for those of you that, I'm sure all of you are aware, we have an incredibly supportive youth softball club. They've done an incredible amount of work, not only on the varsity softball diamond, but also at the JV softball diamond. So this is, this is really a nice opportunity to work with them again, and now we have the opportunity of working with our village collectively to be able to provide an opportunity, not only for our high school softball teams, but also for our youth and community softball teams in the spring and summer. And so this is, as you see in the agenda, this is being recommended from the Buildings and Grounds Committee, Buildings and Grounds and Transportation Committee, with Musco being the vendor that you'll see highlighted up there at one hundred and forty-eight thousand. That's a little bit of a logistical finance piece. I'll allow Dave to talk a little bit further about what this exactly looks like and then what the timeline looks like.
Yeah, so in a, in a three-way team effort, we are splitting the cost between the village and the school district with the softball club kicking in a certain amount. I believe they, something in the twenty thousand dollar range, leaving us with a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars to split between the village and the school district, and that's how we're going to fund, split up the funding. We hope to get going on that debt this fall, get some piers in the ground and some conduits between the piers for electrical so that we can move quickly in the spring and have this system up and going as quick as possible.
So is our out-of-pocket one forty-eight, or it's one forty-eight minus twenty divided by two?
Yeah, one forty-eight is the total cost of the project and then split up as we, as I described.
Our portion will be about sixty-five thousand.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion by Adam, seconded by Adam. Further discussion? Hearing none, we don't need to roll call.
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to seven D, consider budgeted purchases of student ridership and GPS technology. Scott, you're here again.
Yes, welcome. This is also recommended by the BGT Committee. We've had the fortunate opportunity to be talking about this internally for quite some time. Brian, welcome. Thanks for being here. I know you guys have long days, so appreciate you joining us. This is being funded through our Esser dollars, and so not only has it been approved through the Esser grant, but it's also been budgeted that way as well in our budget. So it was a matter of Brian hitting the road and collecting quotes and finding out which would be the best product for the current transportation software that we currently use. And you'll see up there that Tyler Tech, while not the lowest, there's some logistical reasons why Tyler Tech is being recommended as the vendor of choice for this. I'll allow Brian to talk about the important logistics of what it means in terms of student riding and GPS in our transportation department.
Sure. Well, the ridership software kind of allows us to broaden our, you know, technical horizons in transportation and increase kind of student safety, right, and understand who's on the bus, when they're on the bus, where's the transfers, things of that nature. So anytime we're involving students, we have a large program, and that program needs to communicate with other programs. Right now, any program that we have needs to kind of communicate with our infinite campus, which is kind of what we use as a base, right? So anytime you introduce additional technologies, you also need to communicate with all of those other programs as well. And currently, we use a routing software that is put out by Tyler Technology, so it would lend itself to be the most seamless transition for a ridership program as well. Also tied into that, the brain of this operation comes with the GPS features that allow for engine diagnostics and a variety of different safety features related to driver safety that we could certainly utilize in our fleet and kind of as we grow, moving forward, and increasing technology within this department. So for those reasons, Tyler Technology would be the recommended quote that we go with. Also, that is a company that has opportunity, if we want to even increase our technology heading down the road, putting things like driver tablets onto buses and things of that nature. It's a company that already has that, not all of them do, so it just is another area that presents the most opportunity to continuing our growth.
Can you talk about what this will do for our families and how it might help them, how it might help us, making sure that our kids are safe, even safer?
Yeah, it's, a lot of it is about understanding where our kids are, when we need to understand where they're at exactly. Anytime we would get a phone call and we don't have, you know, a brother or sister didn't get on the bus, did they get off the bus, what stop did they get off at, things of that nature, our dispatcher would have, just point and click and be able to look up any student and understand where they're at, where they've gotten on and off the bus, and which bus, which transfer bus, did they get on the right bus, anything like that. The other area where this helps is with our, we have to report to DPI, our student ridership, and this would make that very streamlined, just super simple. Right now, that's a pretty complex process for any school district that doesn't have any sort of ridership tracking technology, where you basically have to do it by paper and hand and driver memories and things of that nature, but this makes this process pretty streamlined as well. So for DPI reporting, both for summer school and for the regular school year, this would certainly help.
And our youngest kids are really the ones who are part of the transfer process, are they not? Our four Kers?
Yeah, the four Kers transfer a little bit, but a lot of the K-twos are what transfer in the afternoons, and I think everybody, you know, knows that K-fives at least is really what we want to make sure that we're, have a really good grip on and that we are getting them where they need to be and where they're supposed to be, the middle schoolers and the high schoolers. You know, as kids get older, there's a little bit more ease when it comes to that, but as far as making sure that we're understanding that everybody's getting to where they need to be, this piece of technology certainly helps move us in that direction.
So how, I don't understand how, like, does it, like, swipe on and off the bus? Like, how do you know which kids are on and off and where they got off?
Yeah, great question. So this piece of technology, we would have to distribute cards with RFID readers that would be on all of the buses that they would scan in and scan out.
So like, our four K kids are going to have a little scanner, they're going to scan in and out?
That's right, yeah.
Okay.
Have their names and their buses on their.
Oh, yeah, mine had to click on its backpack the entire year last year, so.
Yeah, so there's going to be a lot of trial and error with this, no doubt. There's a lot of companies out there that do this, there's a lot of school districts out there that have had the history of doing this already. You know, it'll be a learning process, a lot of, you know, I've spoke with a lot of districts, a lot of districts thought right off the bat that, you know, your little kids are going to lose whatever you give them, whether it was a fob or a card. In this case, the recommendation would be the card. They're going to lose them, and it's going to be difficult to track, and though some will, a lot of districts that I spoke to found that the older kids lose them much more than the littles, actually. But, you know, that's a piece of it that we'll have to kind of work through and we'll have to kind of roll with and see what works for us and kind of adjust as needed. But yeah, it would kind of be something, you know, my idea would be something along the lines of, you know, a retracting band, how long have those been around as you're scanning in and out of buildings, right, and offices all over the world, so something like that on the school buses.
Brian, in our BGT Committee, you gave a good, a great explanation of if this was approved, the implementation, the timing, the implementation.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Turnaround, once we get approved, turnaround, as far as getting this installed, could actually be, in my mind, relatively quick as far as the companies are concerned, sending people out here to get them installed on our buses. The main first step to that is kind of installing the GPS hardware, which is kind of like the brain of the technology. And the nice thing is that, once we get the brain of the technology installed, we can kind of start working with it. That does not mean that we would mid-year start doing student tracking or ridership data or anything like that, because we do have a lot of features with this technology related to GPS and engine diagnostics, engine diagnostics, our fleet maintenance. Currently, we track our fleet maintenance in our current routing software, so having an engine diagnostic platform and GPS on the buses will allow us to really expand upon that. I know our technicians are really excited about that piece to this, and we would be able to start learning that right now, mid-year. And that would allow us to kind of learn at our own pace and understand and go through the training that the companies would provide at our own pace without having to be rushed, say we did it at the end of the school year and had to squeeze everything in the summer and learn all of the GPS features and the student features all at the same time to get ready and geared up for the start of the school year. So this will allow us to get a pretty hefty amount of it underneath our belt that wouldn't really impact families and wouldn't impact students right away while we learn what's going to work for us and how it's going to work.
Communications is really going to be key for us, talking with families and letting them know what it does, what it doesn't do, and likely try to see some launch for families beginning next year so that we can get this all under and be prepared.
Motion to approve.
A second. Motion by Brad, seconded by Jessica. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to.
Thanks, guys. Good to see you, Brian, and thank you for staying late. I know you get to your office by five-thirty every morning, so here you are. Thank you.
Great, moving on to seven E, consider removal of physical science from high school course selection catalog. Sarah, are you going to walk us through this one?
Sure. Last year in the fall, so fall of 2021, the science department at the high school shared some changes they were making to the science curriculum, and one of the requests at that time was to remove physical science. Then, in about March-ish, March 2022, when we were doing our annual course removals, revisions, updates, additions, this course, the physical science course, came to the committee for removal. It went through the education committee, but then when it got to the board level, that course did not pass for removal. So we have the physical science class going again this year. At the beginning of the school year, Cody met with the science departments briefly, and they shared that they would still like to pursue ways to remove this course. So I met with the science department along with Cody a couple months ago, then probably October then.
Yes, October.
October, and talked through their rationale again as to why this course is no longer needed at Mount Hore High School. So we thought that we would bring this topic back to the education committee. So at the November meeting, we had a good amount of our science department members here sharing within this document, we'll say on page two, the reasons why they would like to pursue again a rationale for removing the physical science class. At that point, the education committee decided that they would like to move forward this request to the full board for consideration. I don't know if the education committee members want to share their thoughts, or I can go through some of the rationale.
So I was one of the people, I guess the main person against this last year, because I think that it's important that kids are met where they're at as far as classes go, and one of my concerns was that we would be pushing kids that weren't ready into courses that they weren't able to handle. So I did have a conversation with Cody and some of the science teachers afterwards, and I said, hey, you know, can we do something like tracking? Like, how are these kids doing? How are all the kids doing in chemistry and physics? If we're going to push them into those classes that are arguably more difficult, can we track this and see how it goes, kind of like what we've done with math A or B? And they were open to that idea, because I think it's really important that we're meeting kids where they're at, and we're not pushing them into things that are too difficult. And that's kind of what the physical science class was used for, and I kind of think about math A and B and how we split those up and we did that for a reason, because there were kids that weren't doing well. So I said, okay, well, we can give this a try, but there has to be some good tracking and reporting on how this is moving forward. So that's kind of where my brain is at.
Yeah, and you bring up some good points that we have there as well. Looking at, over the past few years, the science department has been working on that curriculum piece to make sure that if physical science is removed, Steve, do you mind going up to the previous page, please? If physical science is removed, thank you, then students can go either into chemistry or, down below, it'll say physics. And like I said, the teachers have been working on that course, those two courses in particular, to make sure that they're inclusive as possible, that students can be successful in either pathway. An issue with the physical science class is students who sophomore year take this physical science class, then when they choose to take chemistry or physics, let's say junior year, much of the content that's in that physical science class is repeated for that, for those students over. So students are there already knowing the information and feeling that it is a waste of time for them. Do you mind going back? Sorry. Thank you, appreciate it. The tracking concerns were there. The physical science class was turning into a class that was very homogeneous of students who are maybe have IEPs, and while we do have a special education teacher within that classroom setting, the needs are too great within that space for that teacher to serve those needs with the physical science teacher. The team feels strongly that they can do a good job having that special education teacher co-teaching in a chemistry class and co-teaching in a physics class with students spread out with those interest areas. The sequencing I had mentioned, that on the previous page that Steve just showed us, that the sequencing does not make sense for the team. We're seeing, because we are asking students to take chemistry or physics their sophomore year, we are seeing more students enter physics. We're seeing those numbers go up, so that's neat to see as well. And like I said, the staffing and supports, because we do have a special education teacher devoted to science now, we feel that we can really support biology, chemistry, and physics well, and have students served with their peers in a more heterogeneous environment. Michael, else do you'd like to add?
No, I think we just, we have a class that, whether it was teacher-picked or not, was heavy with students with IEPs, low socioeconomic, just it was becoming this a very select group of students, and DPI recommend. And DPI recommends, and we noticed, and when we put students with, with peers, they tend to rise at the occasion, right, you surround them with good peers, good examples, and you can get that engagement. So that's something that we really felt strongly about. I think to, to the point here with regarding data, I think it's about being able to find those students, those 15, maybe 19 students that we would have maybe recommended and kind of see how they do, right, in physics or chemistry and make sure that we understand, like, where they're doing. And I think that's a pretty easy task, right, to go forward and make sure that we're, we're tracking the data, looking at where it's going. And I think as staffing changes and practices change too, we're just having more engaging types of content curriculum instruction, and so that physics and chemistry become even, I think, more accessible for our students as we kind of even better those practices we have over the last couple of years, so.
Yeah.
I was just going to say that as an education committee member, the science team that was here, there was quite a few members, they gave a really compelling and thoughtful presentation. They seemed to all be in, they were all unanimous in their support for this. They're, they're, they're very much advocating for it, so it makes sense to me.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I think the, I think the tracking concerns are, are a good point for sure, but, and Sarah added a lot of the context that the, the science faculty gave. I think the compelling things for me were, one, the repetitive nature of, of having them go into physics or chemistry after and have them to relearn in that current sequence. But they also made a strong case that they've done a lot over the last few years to make those classes more inclusive so that they can better support all of those students.
That kind of makes me wonder, sorry, Brian.
No, no, I, I was, I'm interested in what you, what you have to say, I was going to ask about.
As we're trying to get through, it kind of makes me wonder, you said they've adjusted chemistry and physics, but I want to make sure also that we're still challenging those students that are, that are in those classes that may be the kids that are going to move on to AP, like, I want to make sure that we're, I want to make sure we're meeting kids where they're at. I want to make sure that we're not, we're not making it too easy for the kids that are advanced learners or too hard for the kids that maybe aren't on that path. So that's kind of something that I just thought of.
There's been differentiation, I'm going to use that term, like, within the classroom, right? And it's not always just students with, with IEPs, but it's be able to take, if you have a concept, be able to have different levels of reading, whether you want to read, check out a, a magazine article, okay, we're going to do this, it's about being able to try to give students options that meet them to, right, to that point to where they're at. And by providing more options, those labs, those hands-on experiences, and Mr. Jakes has added a lot more, even this year is really upped in terms of the hands-on lab piece of it, again, because that's what engages students, right, get those hands, get those, those things moving. But that differentiation piece is not only just for students with IEPs or students who have maybe some deficits, but also students who, who need to be challenged and extended, right? And I think that's also something that I know that Morgan does, I know that Kristen has been doing and has done for years, and I know Phillip enjoys doing too. I think it's actually part of what's fun about a class is when you have these wide groups, you can bring different groups together. I think when it becomes so homogeneous and it's one type, it becomes really difficult for instruction. So that differentiation's been added, I think not only because of the physical science component, but we have students who are trying to challenge themselves and jump in and we've, and we want to make sure that we're expansive. So they've certainly differentiated over time and then having Gina in there this year to have those conversations, you know, Tom Shea was a former special education teacher too, and so bringing that perspective to have those wide variety of instructional opportunities for students is certainly there and continue to expand. I think there's, there's still room to grow in that area, but it's an area that they've definitely jumped up significantly in the last couple of years and partly COVID kind of forced, right, it forced us to find different ways to access curriculum and find different resources. And within that, they're like, oh, let's keep, so let's keep a lot of these resources, there's some silver linings, they've been able to keep some resources that maybe they wouldn't have had before, even sought out, but now that we have those, we can really differentiate class. So I think part of it comes from the silver lining of that, too.
I'd like to add then, I think one of the last points going along with what you're saying and what Cody was saying, is that in the past five, six years, as we look at essential learning outcomes and we really are looking at what the learning intentions are for a specific lesson, really looking at those core concepts and making sure we're, we're hitting it well for all kids. Because we're doing that, we can modify and adapt for students who, who maybe need that, that additional support to really understand that core concept that's occurring at that time, but then still offering what we were offering before to the other students, so.
Brian?
So I, I wanted to ask you a question, so, because I'm having trouble tracking what happened between last year and this year, which is not uncharacteristic, but what, what's, what are your thoughts? I mean, you felt pretty strongly about this last time around, so what, what is your, how are you thinking about this?
I did feel pretty strongly about it last time around. I, I just want to, like I keep saying tonight, make sure that we're meeting kids where they're at and I don't want to push them to do things that they're not ready to do. Sometimes repetition is not a bad thing for kids, right? I mean, we had a spiraling curriculum for how many years in math that was essentially repetition of concepts. So sometimes repetition is not a horrible thing for kids. I think that I could move to agreeing to this as long as we're doing some significant grade tracking for those kids and making sure that we have the supports for those kids that need them, while at the same time still challenging those kids that might be able to master those concepts easily, but also expand upon the concepts that are in the class.
Right.
That's kind of where I'm at this year.
Thank you.
So my question would be if, if these kids previously, they get their three credits for like, I'm going to avoid the hackout of, you know, physics or chemistry because it's just something that intimidates me, scares me. What's their track now, if they're taking both?
They're taking biology freshman year.
Yep.
And then sophomore year, they, they can choose chemistry or physics, and then they have the third, that they could choose that, or they could take plant sciences, or you could take ecology, or you could take, yep.
Let me just talk about that too. Yeah, and that's.
We're not going to get through.
There's, there are other science credits they can take to add to their science credits so they're not, not taking science, I guess.
So Sarah, it is still three cred, three credits?
Correct.
But they want to do more, right?
Yep.
Okay.
And this would be effective next school year, right?
Look, next school year, yep, '23, '24.
This is one of those rare instances whereby a request has come through with the faculty. You may remember, we typically review any changes to our course handbook in the spring to become effective almost a year and a half out. But because of the previous dialogue and then the conversations of the education committee, we're asking for a one-time dispensation for consideration for this upcoming course handbook, which will come out hopefully shortly.
There would be no circumstance with implementing this next year that would negatively affect any student, satisfy these three credits?
No. No.
Motion to approve the removal of physical science. Second. Motion by Leah, seconded by Jessica. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'm sure that this will be tracked to education.
Don't worry. Don't worry. Thank you. Thank you, guys, appreciate your time.
All right, moving on to 7E, Consider Removal Physical Science 443 District Behavior Standards. And Mr. Johnson's not here.
So I'm going to pinch hit for, for Mr. Johnson. F, G, and H actually are part of one effort. In essence, we've been working with Wisconsin Association of School Boards to review all of our policies. This is one such suggestion that they are making is to really consolidate three policies into one. And this necessitated us proposing a refresh of policy 443, what's called District Behavior Standards. This was reviewed by the Safety and Wellness Committee back in a couple of weeks ago, and you'll see in the attachment, really, all new, all new language. And so, in essence, it's really trying to simplify, less is more, but also then allow for the work of our admin regs and our standard operating procedures to fill in the how, how this policy would be adopted. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I know you also have the benefit of having the Safety and Wellness Committee working together on, on this as well.
Another question.
Please.
And I miss safety and wellness, so apologies, but why does each school have their own code of conduct? Seems like we would have the same issue like we have with dress code where nobody, like, you switch from one building to the next and the rules are different. Why don't we have one consistent code on it?
Great question, because the interventions used to address those kinds of behaviors are different. How we treat a kindergartner with a violation in a handbook policy is very different than we might have at six or seven grade.
But the, the conduct itself doesn't change, like, no hitting applies K-12.
Yes.
Like, so the, the actions themselves, though, like, yes, the consequences are different, but the, the actual conduct that we want kids to have is the same.
Correct, so the, the behaviors that are, that are incivil, uncivil, will always be the same, but the responses to how administration corrects that behavior is age-specific at each code of conduct.
Okay. I sort of get that, but it's still just.
I mean, we could have one code of conduct, but a kindergartner wouldn't need to see how a 12th grader is being, being dealt with.
Right.
In terms of those behaviors, so we try to have it be specific to the age that the students are, are attending that school.
Is this a policy that's, that every school district has?
Pretty much so, yeah, in a very general sense.
I believe the code of con, the, the, it's not the athletic one.
Co-curriculum.
Co-curriculum, thank you, to this.
Sure.
Because we reference it, but then we don't, we don't have it in here, and it is almost impossible to find on our website.
Can do that.
Diana, I believe that Brian also says the effect of, the fact that this identifies PBIS is sort of like a requirement of DPI and how our schools are eligible to like, you know, how they win like PBIS or things.
Yeah, I looked at the old one and I noticed that PBIS was mentioned in that too, it just, I think, I just think it's a weird name for the policy.
Right, maybe that's why I'm getting tripped up.
Because it's just, yeah, some of it's establishing a common language is, is that behavior standard, and how we react to behaviors. Just interesting.
Would you like to see a different name? We can change that.
I don't have strong feelings about that.
Make motion to approve.
Sir.
All right, motion by Jessica, seconded by, we have further discussion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote, Jessica?
Yes.
Brian?
Aye.
Leah?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
And also yes. Policy passes. And then 7G is a consolidation for the 443 teacher standards.
Really removing that policy to reflect what's been added now to this new 443.
Do we need to vote on G and H if we can buy them in a one vote?
You can combine them by motion.
I make a motion to approve G and H.
Second.
Okay, motion by Jessica, seconded by Adam to combine G and H. Further discussion?
I did.
I did that just for you.
Thank you.
Don't say she never got you anything.
All right, hearing none, this doesn't need to, does this need to be a call?
Please, yes.
Roll call vote. Jessica?
Yes.
Brad?
Aye.
Leah?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And also yes. All right. Moving on to eight, citizens' comments. Turn that far. All right. Moving on to nine, future items are listed. As always, feel free to bring something up if you want to discuss it. Moving on to 10, schedule of next meetings, anything, no?
Yes, thank you for asking. Two quick items, the Building's Grounds and Transportation Meeting has been placed as a holder for December 19th at 4:30, that would be virtually, and that meeting will occur only if there's business at hand that night. And then lastly, January 3rd is a Tuesday night, and that's when we'll have our education and our full board meeting, and then after that, I think we get back on track with everything else with the holiday season.
All right, moving on to 11, closed session. Contemplated closed session to consider employment compensation, performance evaluation of data of any employee or with government to validate jurisdiction, or exercises responsibility. Some?
Second.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Curly, and this will be a roll call, Jessica?
Yes.
Brad?
Aye.
Leah?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Curly?
Yes.